Good morning.
Julia, hold on just a second. Folks are being admitted. We have folks in here, so you're ready to go.
Good morning. I want to welcome each of you to the update on gifted education. This is an activity that CAGE and the Center for Gifted Studies have sponsored together for many years. I don't even know how many. We have often done it in person, but when the pandemic forced us to do it online, we learned that we can pick up far more of you for the day. And today we have a very nice group who are gathered to learn about what's going on in gifted education in Kentucky and elsewhere and what's going to be going on in gifted education in the near future and throughout this coming year. We are delighted that each of you is here. I'd like to start out by sharing some information about upcoming activities that CAGE will sponsor. The first one will be the Fall Workshop. And for the Fall Workshop on October the 11th, we will be looking at the social emotional needs of our gifted children and actually of us as educators as well. And we will be doing that at the WKU campus in Elizabeth Town, hoping to make that more central for many of you to come. The next CAGE activity that's big, and of course, we'll have lots of things that are going on otherwise, but the proclamation signing in the rotunda will be February the 1st. That's a wonderful day to bring students to learn about government and to be there to have the celebratory feeling that happens when the proclamation for Gifted Education Month is signed. So that's February the 1st. CAGE is going to be having an in-person conference, actually a regular conference, the kind we've known about for so many years in late February. And that's February 27th and 28th. So mark your calendars. We're going to have a great lineup of keynote speakers and workshop and session presenters, and you won't want to miss it. It will be in Lexington. It will be at the Hilton downtown. So information is up on the CAGE website. And very soon, there will be a link for getting your room reserved for the conference. And for CAGE, I would like to say that our organization is alive and well, and I hope each of you is a member of the Kentucky Association for Gifted Education. So my welcome from the Center for Gifted Studies will say to you that we've got a lot going on. We're launching TIP Kentucky. I think all of you know that Duke TIP closed a couple of years ago. And so to keep the talent search alive and well, the Center for Gifted Studies has launched the opportunity for above-level testing and appropriately challenging programming to match the level of learning that students are ready to engage in. We also have a workshop coming up on September the 22nd for twice exceptional learner understanding. And for twice exceptional learners, they need a team to understand them. They need the classroom teacher. They need the special education teacher, the gifted resource teacher, and the parent all involved. So I hope you'll share that news broadly. And we have Super Saturdays. We have the IDEA Super Saturdays, the first three Saturdays in November and then February. And we'll do the IDEA Festival on February the 16th. So keep up with CAGE and the Center for Gifted Studies on our websites. So that's very important. And we'll start out today with a word from Commissioner Jason Glass. So Tyler, let it roll.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jason Glass, Kentucky's Education Commissioner and Chief Learner. And I'm honored to welcome our gifted and talented educators back for the 2022-23 school year. I want to thank the Kentucky Association for Gifted Education and the Center for Gifted Studies at Western Kentucky University for hosting this gifted education update. As we begin this school year, our educator schools and districts must continue to ensure that they provide all children an equitable opportunity to receive gifted services. And going forward, it's so important that our gifted educators continue to challenge all students to be the absolute best version of themselves, including those who are at grade level and beyond. Here at the Kentucky Department of Education, we're working on implementing a new vision for education called United We Learn. And that vision comes from countless conversations we had with Kentuckians over the past two years. They spoke and we listened. What we found was that we need to create more vibrant, meaningful learning experiences for every student by creating the kinds of deeper learning experiences that spark curiosity, motivation, and engagement that prepare our students for the fast-moving world that they're inheriting. On top of that, Kentuckians also told us that they wanted to see more innovation in our schools. You, our gifted educators, are vital in bringing about that effort. As you're all aware, our gifted and talented students have special needs that must be met in order for them to reach their full academic potential socially and emotionally. Providing more vibrant learning experiences through innovative methods, while still providing gifted students with appropriate services, will ensure that we maintain their engagement in learning, allow them to reach mastery of the content, and afford them more opportunities for enrichment and acceleration. As a former classroom teacher, I understand the challenges you will all face daily. But I know that our gifted educators here in the Commonwealth welcome these challenges and will continue to do what's best for all of our students. From all of us at the Kentucky Department of Education, welcome back. And I hope you have a great and wonderful school year.
Thank you, Commissioner Glass. It is so important to have your words of welcome. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Allison Mefford. Allison, can you turn your camera on?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Allison is the Executive Director of the Kentucky Association for Gifted Education. And I thought this would be a great time to introduce her to all of you who are on this update in gifted education. Would you want to say a word to Allison?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity and welcome to all of you all that are on this Zoom link today. And thank you for making time. As we all know, everyone that works in this field, you don't have nine-to-five, Monday through Friday jobs. And here we are on Saturday, making time for this important topic. So my hearty thanks to all of you all for putting aside this day for something that we're all passionate about. I took the position on August 1st and have been deep, deep in the learning mode, which is appropriate for heading this organization. And I want to continue to learn every step of the way. I've learned from everyone I've met with so far and just welcome lots of new conversations. And I'm honored to take up this post. So feel free to reach out to me at any time. Thank you. Thank you, Julia.
Thank you, Allison. I love the fact that you talk about learning that Commissioner Glass called himself the chief learner. When we stop learning, we're kind of not moving forward at all. And of course, in gifted education, we want lifelong learners. That's one of the goals for all children. So thank you, Allison.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The next or the first piece on the program, actually, will be presented by Mary Evans. Mary Evans is a former principal, outstanding elementary principal. And Mary is on the staff of the Center for Gifted Studies at WKU and is often out among the educators and parents in Kentucky, working with them to make sure they're up to speed, up to date on what gifted children need. How do we make that happen? And this morning, she's going to share about the importance of school committees for gifted education. Mary?
Good morning. I'm pleased to be with you all this morning. Okay. I am a firm believer that the school-based gifted and talented selection and placement committee is vital to helping schools implement identification and services in their buildings. Too often, I find that it's left up to one person, often the guidance counselor, to coordinate identification and services in a building. And with everything else they have to do, it is just way too much for one person to do. We have been working with the Jefferson County Schools for several years. And one of the best practices that we are promoting with them is the school-based gifted and talented committee. And we have put together some professional development for them, and they were gracious to let us share some snippets of that with you this morning. The professional development that we have done with the Jefferson County Schools was a three-part series. The first session that we did was gifted education in the Commonwealth and the role of the team. And just to provide a good, solid background, then the second session, a month later, was identification of gifted and talented learners. And then we finished up with service options and the gifted student service plan. Move something here so I could get to my air. There we go. I'm going to share just a few of the slides from each of those three presentations. One of the things that we tried to do was always keep the focus on the students. And so if you were going to do something similar to kind of replicate this, you would want this to be a picture of students in your school. We always went back to the regulation to make sure that everyone that was having this training realized this wasn't just what Mary Evans said or what JCPS said. This comes from the Kentucky Regulation. And in the Regulation, Section 4C, it says that there shall be a committee for determination of eligibility and services. A school, district, or school shall assemble a selection and placement committee with four purposes. And you know, it says district or school, but we highly promote that there be both, that there needs to be a committee in each individual school as a district-wide committee. The purposes are to provide feedback on the adequacy of the school, in this case, its identification and diagnostic procedure, to ensure that a variety of views are heard during the selection and placement process, which is so, so important because we promote that our teachers will be talent scouts and they will be advocates, and they need to be heard. Number three, to determine which students meet identification criteria and which services at what level should be included in the gifted student service plan, and then to help provide communication and support in schools and communities. And I think this one is very, very important. It seems that in many places, gifted education is a secret. And you know, the identification process is a secret. And you know, parents have lots of questions. Community members have questions. So if we can have this building-level committee, then there's a lot more people in the know that have the understanding that can then talk to other people and help with understanding. I have created a padlet. This training that we did in Jefferson County was held after school, and it was on Zoom. And so I provided the handouts for the teachers through a padlet. And so I am providing that for you. So everything that I talk about today that could be in the form of a handout, of course, you know, I would love it to be a face-to-face training, and you could actually hand things to people. But we know many times it needs to be virtually. So all of the handouts are on this padlet, so you'll have access to those. One of the things that we did in that very first training was try to dispel some of the myths. And you know, there are so many of those myths out there. And the way that we did it was, you know, with a game. You know, many times on Zoom, you can kind of use the polling feature. You know, here's the paper copy of it. And you know, there are tons and tons of myths out there, and we just selected 10 to use. And we did it in this format. For instance, this was the third one. Gifted children come from families of all socioeconomic levels, and we know that is so true. Then we used an example of a real child. We asked the teachers to write some little vignettes for us. This is Anaya. She lives with a single mom and four siblings. She moves in with her grandmother when her mom's unable to pay the rent. She was recommended for the primary talent pool, barely on grade level in reading, yet she has the ability to think deeply, make connections and inferences. She has an advanced vocabulary. She demonstrates leadership skills. And unlike most children her age, she is very interested in current events. And she communicates well verbally and loves to write stories. And so by having these little stories to illustrate the different myths and truths, it makes it more real for the teachers. It's like, these are our kids. Here's another one of the myths on our list. Children who are gifted may be gifted in one or more areas. And of course, we know that's a truth. And here's another one of our students, Adriana, creative writer and creative thinker and a high math achiever. Yet she struggled so much with reading, she was in reading recovery. And so initially, her teacher thought, well, she's not a very good reader. I can't recommend her for the primary talent pool. But then this teacher participated in some professional development. It changed her mindset. She realized that you can be gifted in one area and not gifted in all areas. So they placed her in the high cluster group. She stayed in reading recovery, and now she is performing well in all content areas. So the teacher did decide to refer her for the primary talent pool. Of course, another part of this first training was the regulation. And you know, that can be kind of dry just to read through that. So we tried to do it in a fun way. There were three particular points from the regulation that we particularly emphasized, that gifted children constitute a category of exceptional children. We want everyone to realize that, that there are five categories of giftedness because many teachers really only think that there's the academic area. And every exceptional child will have an individual education plan. So those were the three main points that we emphasized. We, you know, took straight from the regulation that gifted children in Kentucky are designated as exceptional children, and then the definition of gifted in our regulation that lists those five areas. And then we took each of those five areas and really talked in depth about what are some of the characteristics that go with those. So the general intellectual with asking the probing questions and good memory, et cetera. The specific academic ability requiring little or no drill and large vocabulary, likes to read in that area, great intensity in that area. Need to give credit to Jennifer Sheffield for this beautiful slide. I just love this slide to illustrate creativity and how the curious drawn to complexity and the quirky sense of humor and all those characteristics of our creatively gifted. Of course, we talked about our leadership gifted and our visual and performing arts so that teachers realize that, you know, there's music, dance, drama, visual arts, all these different areas. So the fun way that we got them into the regulation was through a scavenger hunt. And this is on that padlet for you to have access to. And we divided them into breakout groups and asked each person to really read the regulation and find answers to these different points, and then to tell where in the regulation they found them. Because as teachers serve on these building-based committees, they will be talking to their colleagues about different things. And sometimes people come back to you and say, well, why is that true? Prove to me that that's true. How do you know that? And so they need to be familiar enough with the regulation that they know what's in there and where to find different things. So here's an example of how we did that. Like, here's one of the questions on the scavenger hunt. How often must parents receive progress related to their children's gifted student services plan? Well, this one's a semester. And where would you find that? Section 5, number 3. And then that would give us at that point, and as we're discussing the scavenger hunt, then we would talk about the gifted student service plan and emphasize how it really is an IEP for gifted. It's a legal document. And teachers are very surprised by this. They know about the IEP for special needs, but they don't really think of the gifted student service plan as an IEP unless they're told that. They also, many of them don't realize that parents are supposed to have input into this and that they are supposed to have input into it because somebody, many times, the gifted resource teacher just writes it. And then we really emphasize how it's not really supposed to be a cookie cutter kind of GSSP, but should be individualized per student. We talk about the school-based committee for determination and eligibility of service. What, who should be on this committee? Well, of course, ideally, we want the administrator, and we want the administrator to chair it so that they are very involved. In Jefferson County, they have GT leads in some of the schools, so they should be a part of that. They also have what they call goal clarity coaches. The guidance counselor should be a part of this. In elementary, you would want a primary and an intermediate classroom teacher at middle and high school. You would want subject area teachers. You would want special education teachers on this committee, and then special area teachers such as the art, music, dance, and drama. We share with them a job description for this committee. This committee oversees the identification and services of high-potential talent pool students and formally identified students in their buildings. They ensure that a variety of views are heard during the process. They assess the current identification practices and services, what's happening now, what could be happening. They develop an action plan to improve areas that are not meeting the regulation. They monitor that improvement plan so that identification and services gets better and better. And then they plan professional development in how to identify and how to serve students. This frequently comes up in these committee meetings. It's like, well, teachers need to know more about how to find students that, for instance, are gifted in creativity. So we need to have some professional learning experiences about that. And then to help provide communication and support in the schools and communities. So we developed a planning document, and they work on this as a team. Ideally, when we had the professional development in Jefferson County, we tried to get school teams to come as a group. It just happened in a few instances. Mostly, what we had was one person from the team would come. And so then they would do this assessment and go back then and share it with the team. But we just simply, at the beginning, in that very first training, we asked them just to read through this action plan and assess their school by saying, this is in place or it's not in place. And you know, many times they said, I don't know. I don't know. So we just told them to leave it blank. So that was the basis of the first training. And these were 90-minute trainings that were after school. So then before they left, the first training was in March. We said, now mark your calendar. The next training's going to be April 14th. And then as you go back, reflect on your school self-assessment and share the strengths and weaknesses with the rest of your committee and determine the steps needed for improvement. Then for the second training, Part 2, it focused on the identification of gifted students. And again, you would want to replace these pictures with from your school, but we just put a bunch of pictures of Jefferson County students up there and said, which students are gifted? And probably several of you are familiar with the Purdue simulation. But this is a great activity to help people understand the diversity of gifted students. And the Purdue simulation was developed by Marcia Gentry and her team from Purdue. And we can find it in one of her books, Total School Cluster Grouping and Differentiation. And basically, the way it works is there are a series of vignettes. And these are, well, let me just read you one here. James, James is nine years old and entering fourth grade. James's mother married his father, a Baptist minister, when she was 13 years old. The couple was together for 11 years and divorced a year ago. She's currently raising James and his brother on her own, working two or three different jobs to support the family. Although James stated that he wants to be a doctor, he's currently at the bottom of his class. There is not data on James IQ, but he's often taunted by his classmates and even called a dummy. James has a very explosive temper and is easily provoked. So these taunts have led him at times to violent outbursts. In addition to the occasions when he has tried to hurt his classmates, he's also been known to physically attack his mother when he became frustrated at home. In the classroom, James is frequently in trouble and often disrupts class. So then we, you know, ask them in their groups, we give them the different vignettes, and we ask them to think about strengths, areas of challenge, and other information that would be needed. Would this child qualify for the current gifted program at your school? And if so, in what areas? And so, you know, they work on these and they share back. Well, then, as you might expect, it turns out that these, all of these vignettes are successful people, and most of them are famous people. For instance, James is Ben Carson. And so as you think back on the things you've heard about Dr. Ben Carson's life, you think, yeah, yeah, I've heard that about, you know. And so it really does open eyes of teachers that many of our gifted students are not the perfectly well-behaved, high-achieving teacher pleaser, that sometimes these students have behavior issues and learning issues and that kind of thing. So that kind of sets the stage of a broader picture of what the gifted child might be like. Then we talk about best practices and identification, things like, you know, needing to have a broadened conception of giftedness and avoiding a single cutoff score and using multiple criteria from lots of different places, separate instruments for the different areas, promoting inclusiveness, being aware that giftedness appears in different forms. It looks differently in children of different cultural or socioeconomic groups. We talk about using identification data to enhance understanding of students and how to serve them and should occur as a result of their needs and abilities rather than, oh, we can only have 10, so that's all we're going to have. The importance of collaborative efforts among colleagues and how important it is that identification be ongoing, what we call rolling identification. So then we took each one of the areas, and I'll just share what we did with the general intellectual area, and kind of followed the same format. We shared the definition from the regulation. And then we went into the regulation and shared what is recommended of how to find these students, what kinds of instruments to use, like in the general intellectual area. You know, we want a measure of intellectual ability. But in addition to that, we want checklists and that kind of thing. And then we talked about that characteristics can be both positive and negative, and that's very eye-opening. Teachers are like, oh, yeah, I have these students. And then we emphasized the importance of having, you know, three or more pieces of evidence. So, you know, a cognitive abilities assessment. And this is the JCPS. This is, you know, they do that with all third-grade students and then to fourth and fifth-grade students and middle and high school students who may have been missed, flagging at the 96 percentile, gathering more evidence. And then, of course, the importance of utilizing the special considerations. We talked about different identification methods. JCPS had done the cognitive abilities test. They are moving this year to the Naglieri. We share with them different behavior checklists, such as the JOT Downs and the Rinzouli Scales. And then we go back to that planning document. And again, ideally, we hope there's a team there. And this time, they're looking at the identification part of this form. And we're asking them to look at each of those areas and have you, do you have a process in place for formal identification of students in each of those five areas? And this time, we're asking them to propose a responsible person and to set a timeline for how they'll work on that. And then what are the action items? What do we need to do to make this happen? Then we go back and review the steps, you know, give a universal screeno, collect evidence, meet with the committee, create a plan for servicing, send home permission slips, code the students in Infinite Campus, and begin the student services. create a plan for servicing, send home permission slips, code the students in Infinite Campus and begin the student services. Then at the end of the meeting, mark your calendar for next month. Reflect on the school self-assessment, share strengths and weaknesses, and determine what you need to do for improvement. Then Part Three focuses on the services. We go back to that same picture. We found them. Now what do we do with them? How do we serve them? We go back to the regulation of, you know, what does the regulation say about service delivery options? What are the service options that are listed in the regulation? They're numerous. One of the things we found was that we needed to spend some time with the vocabulary, with the definitions that, you know, there's not understanding out there of terms like acceleration, cluster group, and collaboration and consultation. So we then asked them to reflect on what services they currently offer. We had another form for that. So what services just in each of those areas do you currently have? Then we talked about the importance of multiple services. And then we talked about the other things in the regulation that focus on this, such as curriculum and the importance of differentiate, replace, supplement, modify, to develop interests, needs, and abilities. We talked about grouping and made sure that they knew that grouping for instructional purposes shall be utilized, that that's in the regulation and shall be means do it. Then we talked about two categories of services, acceleration and enrichment. We spent quite a bit of time talking about acceleration because there's not a lot of understanding out there about that. And shared with them how there's 50 years of research showing that Moving Bright Students Ahead has strongly positive results both academically and socially. We shared the great resources that are out there, the nation deceive, the nation empowered, and how they can have access to those. We shared with them that there are many, many types of acceleration because really, most people, when you say acceleration, they just think of grade skipping. Then we talked about enrichment and what does enrichment mean? Going into greater depth or breadth, and sometimes enrichment and acceleration overlap. And we included that quote by Davis Remen Siegel that strategies that supplement or go beyond standard grade-level work but do not result in advanced placement or potential credit, that's enrichment. Then we shared with them, you know, different types of enrichment. And the fun part of this is many times the teachers are saying, oh, we do that, we do that, we do that. You know, things like the Lego League and math counts and speech and debate and, you know, different problem-solving programs and then different simulations. Then we spend quite a bit of time talking about differentiation because there's lots of misunderstandings about that too, and that you can differentiate based on content, process, and product and learning environment. And, you know, just trying to make it more understandable, talking to them like, would a doctor give the same prescription for all patients who come in on Tuesday? Would a doctor give the same prescription to all patients in the eighth grade? Well, of course not. So as teachers, we don't want to do that either. Then we asked them, you know, to think about which services work best for different areas. Because, you know, many teachers just think of pull-out. That's the service and that's for everything. Well, not necessarily. So then we asked them to go back and reflect on the five different areas and of the services we've talked about, what would work in those areas? So then we go back to that same chart where they mentioned what services they currently offered. And this time, we ask them to focus on what services could be offered in their school and who's responsible in all of the different areas. Then we talk about the gifted student service plan, going back to the regulation of what does the regulation say about that? And that's the JCPS one. And then we talk about the progress report. Many of, many of the teachers we find don't really know that the progress report needs to happen once a semester because they've not been involved with that before. And so then we gave them some case studies. We had a primary one, an intermediate, a middle school, and a high school and asked them to create a gifted student service plan, matching the services to the students' needs, interests, and abilities. Of course, ideally, you know, if you were having this training in your school with a team, you would use real student case studies and they would work through the process. Then we go back to that planning document again. So, you know, at all three of these trainings, they have been working through this document. This time, they're planning for multiple service delivery options in each of the areas and proposing a responsible person with a timeline and action items. Then this time, what are your next steps? Meet with your committee, reflect on the self-assessment, talk about strengths and weaknesses, and determine next steps. And so there are three options that we discussed for training for these building-based committees. There's the three-part committee training. There's the video. And then there's, we developed a question and answer document. We just took those questions that were, you saw on the screen for the video. And then it's just on a document that's included in that padlet. So there are some options from the first one being one that probably is the best, but it also takes the most time to an 11-minute video to just a handout with some questions and answers. So that concludes my session. And so if anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Mary, there was a question about whether you would share your PowerPoint.
I would be happy to share the PowerPoint.
And if anyone has any questions, feel free to put them in the Q and A box and we will ask Mary to put those questions.
And not only is Mary happy to share, this whole session is being recorded. And so you could use any pieces of this. I think Mary's presentation highlights for us how important it is that everyone who makes decisions about identifying gifted children and providing services, all of those people must be knowledgeable. It is so easy to get caught up in the mythology that is so persistent. And there is so much truth that we need to make sure that educators know. Well-meaning educators have lots of myths that they continue to share unless they have the opportunity to learn. One of the words that I hear when Mary's sharing is looking at the needs of gifted children. And please remember that need usually is talking about a deficiency, a weakness. And many times for a gifted child, that need is created by their strength. And so it does not look needy. And it is really important for educators to pre-assess so that they understand what those needs are. I think that the update coming at the beginning of the school year is so well-placed because best practice, when it is initiated as the school year begins, is so much easier to impact the year. It's a little bit like a classroom teacher finding that setting that climate in the classroom for differentiation in August and September allows for different students to have different assignments based on what they're ready to learn easier than it would be in January, February, when students in that class are expecting all assignments to be the same. So as you plan a differentiated classroom, setting the climate for that as school begins is incredibly important.
Brilliant. There's a question in here and it relates to the GSSP. So I don't know if Mary wants to address it now or if that's something Kathy will address when she talks about it. I find it difficult to get teachers to be involved in the process of writing GSSPs and progress reports. Any advice on getting teachers to be more involved in that? I see Mary was starting to type an answer, so.
I'll speak to it. You know, it goes back to the administrator setting the expectation that this is a collaborative process and that we're all working together to address the needs of these students. So, you know, ideally, if you have your administrator on board, then they can reflect that. Now, I know that substitutes in schools is next to impossible to find nowadays. But a practice that I found worked really well was being able to hire sub-teachers for a team of teachers. And we had our intermediate teachers have subs in the morning, then those subs went to the primary teachers in the afternoon. And we gave them a half-day to work with our GT lead to develop those GSSPs. That's ideal, but I realize that's probably not going to happen. It, they just have to, someone with some influence has to help them understand that this is not the GT teacher's responsibility or this is not the guidance counselor's responsibility. Just like with, you know, the IEP, we're all going to implement this. And if I'm going to implement something, I want to have some input into it. So. But it is, I know how difficult it is. If that has not been the mindset in the school, then all of a sudden it becomes the mindset when teachers are just so busy and overwhelmed with everything they have to do.
Thank you, Mary. What a good overview of gifted education is needed by the committee. And you did that so well. Thank you very much, Mary.